With a resolution two thousand eleven oh nine twenty-eight authorizing the use of public funds. And, uh, we're out of here and I'm gonna give you a little background. Let's see, it's one point, we're all for, we're talking about one point five cents for seven years, right?
Yeah, one and a half cents.
One and a half, huh?
Seven years.
Do I?
Yeah, one and a half cents.
One and a half cents, seven year, uh, seven years, it's, uh, it's not, it's mainly not a financial incentive, but it's more of a revitalization incentive. Uh, we've got a site that's been sitting empty for five years, since serious disrepair. Uh, it's tried to been, it's been tried, attempted to be marketed quite a few times. Uh, not only is the grocery store empty, but the store next to us is empty. And the pharmacy has talked to me a couple of times about, uh, moving, leaving. Because they're sitting there by theirself in big dark parking lot. And, uh, you know, of course, y'all know we're in the pharmacy business and so anything we do to keep the pharmacy here is defeated with us. But they talked about it and we want them to stay. And, uh, so, uh, you know, at one time Leeds forty-five grocery stores with seven thousand people. It has, uh, two or three stores now, it has two stores and, uh, and it really has three grocery stores. But we have a service area fifteen to twenty thousand people and that doesn't include thirteen thousand living and moving. Uh, also, it's been said that the store will shuffle customers around. And, uh, it'll just take a limited market and move them around between stores. But, uh, you know, there's, uh, none of the stores we have in town are really all, all the same. There are different kinds of stores, going to specific niches and this store will be the same way. It'll, it'll be more of a traditional type store, uh, to help, probably to help revitalize the area. Under the agreement, they've agreed to clean up the blight, uh, they've agreed to, uh, pay parking lot, fix the lights, paint the ballers, fix the facade, paint and update the storefronts. The people who have control of CBS have agreed to change the look of it. So the whole thing's gonna change in the way it looks. Uh, we know instead of losing a store, we're gonna bring in a one, two stores for sure. There's a possibility that there may even be a fourth store that comes in. Uh, so right now, we have a blighted, empty property in the center of Leeds that goes, uh, that gives an impression that Leeds is dying. By the way it looks when you drive by it, it's not a good impression for people who want to have other businesses and homeowners. So, you know, this amount of money is limited to a hundred thousand dollars a year under the proposal. And, uh, we would get three, possibly four productive stores, a revitalized piece of property, and an estimated minimum of profit of two to three hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes. And that's a lot better than zero. Uh, it's in a TIF district, which is, uh, is a special kind of district for revitalization. We get a certain, it's complicated, we're getting money out of Jefferson County for reboot, for this, right? I mean, and, and all, and, uh, so, you know, we're looking at seven hundred thousand over seven years against product, uh, against an estimated two million or more. And, uh, and, uh, we also get any kind of occupation tax, people hired there, and business license. And, uh, grocery store went to the one forty exit, uh, we could get nothing because that's, we get occupation tax, of course, and business license, but we wouldn't get any, uh, uh, sales tax. All that money goes to pay Bass Pro bonds. And, uh, so, you know, we, uh, I mean, it's probably a good decision, watch, listen to what everybody says, but not just we're paying somebody to come here, we're paying to revitalize the project and to possibly attract four stores. We know two more, two stores and keep one store that's already here. So, you know, all right, anyway. And, uh, you know, incentive deals have been done in the past, I'm not real happy about some of those. Uh, but I think this is a good incentive deal, uh, for the city. I mean, uh, all these, we've got shopping centers that are half empty, are empty. And, uh, you know, we've, um, you know, so we'll start the hearing, we'll start with people that are against it. And, uh, say your name, address, and step up. And we'll take them, we'll take them back and forth until we run out of people who are on the opposite side and then we'll take everybody that still left. So anybody who ever wants to come up first, come on up, give us a name and address.
We're not gonna say anything, man, I told you.
Anybody?
But the council can speak too, I mean, anybody on the council.
Oh, well, good counsel. Four's over. Uh, anybody, I said, okay, anybody forward that wants to come up, call. Okay?
Well, I, I'd like to say.
What?
Oh, I'm sorry.
From the public. All right, now, the council, starting on the left, Mr. Kyle.
Oh, okay. Mary, I don't see it making, uh, the biggest splash in Leeds as you think it's gonna make. Because I've been rolling grocery shopping here for over forty-something years with my family and everything. And, you know, and that's just a big dollar store, it's got elaborate, like a Publix or something like that. I don't think it's gonna bring that many outsiders in. Uh, I, I know for a fact that probably the people from the eastern side of our border, Moody and Oldham, they're gonna stop at Walmart, that's where most of our traffic is. Uh, yeah, we have a blighted city, yeah, it's been that way since Walmart came in. You know, stores downtown, uh, I think that you got, you know, and I think we're looking at maybe, we got two small grocery stores, mid-grade grocery stores in our town, we're gonna split that traffic. And, you know, and if they getting fifty percent of what they're making now and their cost is up thirty-five percent of what they get, you know, you're likely to hurt both stores. Instead of putting one store strong in here, the two intermediate stores, you might end up damaging the other store, they might end up having to shut their doors. That's my personal opinion. Uh, worst thing anybody's, I travel a lot, worst thing anybody's ever done for a town is let Walmart in across the city and we use the tax. I mean, I, our growth grew with Walmart, that's what we're counting on right there. But, you know, it used to be all those stores in Leeds were full and thriving, now they're dead. And we're all going to Walmart and everybody is going to Walmart. But we are, we did manage that, but we killed our, all of our inner growth too, the small stores. We don't provide, uh, food markets with one and a half percent. They, you know, I'm sure their, their, uh, contribution to city budgets is very strong, from what I see. Uh, they have a lot of employees down there and a lot of people using on this side of town keep going to Walmart. I've shopped there for thirty-five years under three or four different, uh, owners. It's convenient and we're just not gonna pick up that much more traffic with a mid-level store.
Okay, Ms. Ernest.
Well, I, I'd just like to say, um, I'm the only, I'm the only council member who's not a lifetime, uh, lifelong resident of Leeds. I chose Leeds. And I think, uh, the one thing that impresses me is this grocery store chose Leeds. And, uh, it came to us looking for, for a home. And, um, I was very flattered by that because they thought that, um, we were attractive enough, um, economy for them to service an area that was served for a long time by a grocery store. And the city was hurt very bad when the grocery store left. And I, like I said, I'm, I am much in favor of, uh, of the property owner who's bought that property and wants to upgrade the property, as well as the tenants who want to come in.
I agree with everything Ms. Ernest said. Um, I also feel like the one and a half cent is not really for the grocery store, it's for the revitalization of that shopping center. And, um, because the building sat empty for what, five years now, four and a half, five years? And, um, I mean, there, there's gonna have to be a lot of work done to that building and that area before they can open up. And that's what the one and a half cent is. It's not, we're not just giving money to a grocery store, it's to, it's to fix the building up that sat there empty. And, um, I mean, we had to give a pound a lot more to keep some of the other businesses that, big businesses that came into town. So, I, I mean, right now, we're getting zero. We're not getting any dollars off of that site. So if we get, um, two and a half cents off of that site, off of every dollar spent there, that's better than zero, which is what we're getting right now. And we get a revitalized shopping center. So I just think it's a win-win.
Ms. Garcia. I agree with Ms. Garcia and Ms. Ernest. And it's, it's, it's good to point out that a lot of chains will not even consider moving into an existing building. They want to build their own buildings. So it is, uh, and that just leaves other empty buildings for now. So, uh, I think it's a great opportunity to revitalize that shopping center. Uh, and be positive about it in four leagues.
Ms. Watson.
Yes, sir, now. I'm not here trying to oppose no grocery store, no development from coming into the city, because I think that we need it. But I am, count, I, I hear councilmen, honestly, say that they chose this city to come in. But if you chose it to come, you should, you, not to take our tax dollars away from it. We voted for another penny tax when I was on this council. And I'd vote for that penny to give away a penny and a half. I think that it's things that we need, we done built and involved fields, that's been sold to us, that we want people to come into our city. And we need all these improvements to get them here. Now that we getting them here, we having to give away everything in order to do that. I just don't believe that that one and a half cent. I mean, I don't even know who this grocery store is. Not only that, uh, I, I just don't believe that, you know, you're talking about seven years, seven hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money to give away. If it was infrastructure that was involved, like running sewage and all that, that'd be something different. But all that stuff is already there. And we can, if we give everyone in the city one and a half percent just to update and fix their stores, I guarantee that they'll take it. I mean, it's needed, they're fighting just like everyone else is. If they leave, we gonna have to start paying people estate. So we don't need to set no precedent in that way. And if they chose this area, I think they should be like everyone else. They should come in here, have a store that's already built, and you paint whatever it takes and make the improvements, that's what they should do, not take away from the citizen. I mean, I got a park, streets that need to be fixed in our community, that one and a half percent, seven hundred thousand dollars, fix my community up pretty good. I, I'm not trying to run them away, but I think this company should be financially stable to come into our community. I mean, it's, it's there. I've been in the grocery business a long time myself. And I know the perch that most grocery stores get, and there's a lot of them. I just don't think that we need to give away one and a half cent, it just don't make it. We taking away. And I, and I was hearing, I was, it, it was disturbing to vote for another penny to put on these people in our areas because they were needing it. And now, all of a sudden, we're gonna give one and a half percent away. And I'd like to know all the things that they're gonna do, if they'll land out of them, the things that they're gonna do. And I don't think the seven-seven-two amendment was put in place for this type of business. Am I right?
It was done for economic development.
That's right, but what does it say about?
Well, it says the city can make a finding that, uh, the expenditure of public funds for private parties, um, can be done, notwithstanding the benefit of the private parties, if the city believes that it's in the economic interest of the city, they'll do that. I mean, I don't have the text of amendment seven-seven-two in front of me, but I can tell you that it does allow for this type of transaction.
Uh, I think it was meant for new structures, new infrastructure, if I'm not mistaken, that was what it was supposed to be for.
No, I mean, I don't think economic development in the city, you have a blight, you have a vacant space sitting there that's just, uh, you know, deteriorating. And you have to try to get a, a anchor grocery store in there to revitalize the whole shopping center, the pylon sign, the parking lot, the lights, the facade, and to, and to increase the revenues of your city. You understand, you're giving one and a half cents, you're still getting another good incentive, so.
Okay, let me stop you right there. We're gonna give away one and a half percent, then fire protection, where did that come from? Do we still have to get them fire protection?
Fire protection.
Do you?
Just like any other.
Police protection?
Yeah.
So we're gonna make three hundred thousand dollars, right? Problem, maybe?
Problem.
So then you start the document from the fire department, uh, police department, and we're gonna service their checks.
But you, you probably, you have to service that parking lot now. I mean, you got, now you got a vacant part, but you've got part of it that's still in use with the CVS. So you're, you're having to provide fire and police to a vacant building, which I would think would be more expensive to protect than a, a building that has actual sprinklers, alarms, and everything.
And we can argue that point. But, and, and like I say, I'm, I'm not against the grocery store company. I think there's a, a great need for it, but at the same time, somewhere, I, I never forget Jimmy Blake was on the city council in Birmingham. He made this statement, if we had to give away everything to get business into our city, then what's gonna be left for the people? And that's what Justin Canada did, and give away everything it has over there. And I'm also looking at this here, we're talking about Justin Canada, will be giving up money to go along with this here, where they gonna get it from?
We didn't, uh, I didn't say they're giving us money, it comes out of your property tax, uh, out of the TIF funds. And that's property tax, and everybody in here, they get it from the property tax you pay.
And you think they gonna give us something?
Yeah, by law, they have to.
They're not giving us anything now.
Ah, well, it increases the property value, I mean, even the municipal portion of the tax, if it increases the property value, um, you get the municipal portion of after all the tax regardless. I mean, it increases, if it increases the tax value, you get increased revenue.
Well.
But you make a good point, I mean, it is, it's, I'm sure, I know it's frustrating for a city to be in a position where you feel like you're having to give away money to get somebody in there. The alternative is, I guess, the building continues to stay vacant, uh, so.
Well, I don't think they gonna stay vacant if they chose this point. I mean, everyone who chose this area here, now, I, and I'm gonna be honest with you. When Bass Pro came, we can go back and, cause I believe that's gonna be part of this, uh, concern. I voted for Bass Pro, knew we weren't gonna get anything, but that's supposed to have been an anger, a heartbeat for this city. Knew that we weren't gonna get anything out of it, I knew that. Because we wasn't, we didn't have anything down there, but we would for fifty-something years. Now, since we got it in, we, we gonna have to give away one and a half percent to everyone who walked to our door and say, hey, we wanna move to your city. What, what's the purpose of that one percent sale tax? Or that two percent sale tax? Uh, up, upping the taxes on everything we have in here in the city, cause that's what we did. Now all of a sudden, we turning around, giving away one and a half percent to a grocery store? Now I don't even know the name of the grocery store, what is it? Can we mention it now? We're in discussion about it.
Still talking about they own three or four different kinds. They own Food Giants, Foodlands, um, what's the warehouse?
W D G.
W D G.
Super.
They own twenty-four, uh, stores now. And, uh, here's the thing though, uh.
Did, did any of those sort of areas have to give them, give away?
Yeah.
Any tax dollars given?
Because they're revitalizing distressed properties, that's what they're doing. And, you know, uh, it, I mean, they've tried to market this property for over five years, okay? And not only are they trying to get stuff in there, it's a possibility we could lose what's there, which would be a big hit to us. And then you have a whole vacant piece of property and nobody's gonna come in, buy theirselves. They can fill up this whole crazy property in one swoop. And, you know, one and a half percent of zero, zero, it's not like we're just giving them seven hundred thousand dollars, they gotta make the money to get it.
In a relatively short-term rate, did you say yet, they intend to open by January or February?
The current draft agreement provides an opening date by March.
But, you know, we can go back and look at, you know, so we don't want to set a precedent. Listen, the precedent in Leeds been set, that's the problem. Thirty-two million dollars for Bass Pro, we said, uh, Walmart got four million dollars' worth of property for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, they own it. Uh, Lowe's, five million dollars, uh, the tax room costs a mi, one point four million dollars, we don't even own it. This is about, I mean, Walmart and Lowe's doing good for us and I'm glad, I mean, they're here and I'm glad they're here, they're generating money for us, I mean, you know, we compete, my family competes directly with all this stuff. The thing about this piece of property that's important is we can't keep having blighted property in the city. And we're not, you know, they've got to make the money to get, to get any money from it. Right now, we're getting nothing and there's nothing else potential on the horizon. We've been negotiating, trying to find something for a long time. And, you know, the one forty, uh, the one forty exit, uh, the people who control most of that land down there have had over two years to find something, and there's nothing down there. And that, you know, and that, and as far as grocery stores, something, that property goes to pay the Bass Pro bonds. We paid thirty-two million dollars to bring in a store as an anchor store to attract other stores, but the other stores that attract every bit of money it makes goes back to the anchor store. What kind of deal was that?
And then, and you know what? The, the spillover should be that we have these stores like this grocery store wanna come in into our city, we already knew that. If we wanna did anything that, that sit down there and continue to grow trees, to stall us, Empire State Building, I mean, we wanna have anything now. I mean, somewhere down the road, someone have to pay the cost. And it, it just don't make good sense that why did we put that one percent sale tax? Why don't we just give everybody a one and a half percent sale tax, bro? And tell them to fix their building and their stores, so, so one will have right here. I mean, I think that would be the thing to do.
Okay. Way hard from everybody.
And man, I, I, one other thing, I, I, I asked this other question. Who's gonna service their checks for? Are the city of Leeds gonna service that? Their, their bad checks, stuff that comes in?
I mean, the city, city's awesome. Yeah, well, here's the thing about that, cities beg stores to service bad checks, because they make a lot of money off of them. So that's not a, that's not a negative, if they have bad checks, cities charge. Wait a minute over there. Cities, uh, beg stores to, you know, do bad checks, because they make a lot of money off of those checks. I mean, they have big fines and most of that goes to the city. And, uh, I think Walmart has their own people doing their checks now. And that was a big hit to the city. So if it's a bad check issue, that's not a problem, you know, I mean, cause, uh, that's money that's made through the courts and stuff. But, uh, you know, I tell you, to me, the, the thing is, we've had five years for somebody to jump on that piece of property and to change hands three times, it's looking worse and worse and worse. And we're not gonna pay, you know, this is our way of, of having an agreement to, to, to revitalize it. And the people, they have no fixtures in the building, the, the previous owner stripped the building down. It needs a lot of work. And I hate that it's competing with other businesses in town. Like I said, we're keeping a business out there that competes directly with the business I've got. But, I mean, that's, our job is to try to make the city the best it can be. And if one and a half percent of zero is zero, and one and a half percent of, of businesses that generate a lot of money, you know, might be seven hundred thousand, because it's limited to a hundred thousand dollars a year. They could make a lot more than that, and we think they will. But the money that it generates, a couple of hundred thousand dollars plus the other stores it brings in, is a lot better than nothing in a blighted piece of property. Because every time somebody drives by one of those blighted pieces of property and see it, they say, this town's dying. I'm not gonna locate here, I'm not gonna live here, I, I have, I have issues with where this town is headed. And we know that Leeds is doing good, but when you see those empty pieces of property, the people who are thinking about moving here or building a store here, they don't know that. They look at those pieces of property and you go to all these places that have all these empty shopping centers and, and, and tell me what you think about it. You think that stuff's moving out, the places are going down, and it, it's not a city you wanna invest your future in. And to, to revitalize this thing's a big deal. Man, we, we got a list of things they agreed to do. We went with the engineer, we went with, I think Ricky's looked at it, they told us stuff they're gonna do to it. We've got it in writing, and that's what they're mainly being paid for, to bring something there that's nice and that, uh, can help, you know, to revitalize that part of the city. Cause if you can start it with one exit, you know, you've got the two exits and everything in between is kind of, you know, up in there, up in there. So.
But we still don't know what's the name of the grocery store, we're just going out there and see.
The man hadn't decided on the name. You know who owns it? Mitchell Retail Properties, though I told you the three types of stores they own. They own twenty-four grocery stores in Coleman, Adamsville, Forestdale, uh, where else?
I'm aware of Mitchell.
Moody, they own one in Moody. I mean, they have Food Giants, Foodlands, uh.
And then, can I ask this question, ma'am? You say it's gonna bring another business to the area, other than Hills, other than grocery?
Oh, definitely, they brought a contract on another business.
Really?
And it's possible it might bring two.
Possible.
And keep CVS.
And keep CVS, because they don't like being down there by theirself in a dying parking lot.
Well, no one love to be by themselves, but sometimes it's better.
It won't be better if they leave, it won't be better on the people who use it and spend their money there.
But we, we can argue the fact, but I still believe seven years at one and a half percent. Trust was just passing one percent sale tax the other day themselves. We here giving away one and a half.
Okay. Sure, Mr. Kyle?
Just a second.
Sure.
You know, uh, I think the biggest problem with city of Leeds is it's my grocery stores and everything, it's the people. You know, if we don't get rooftop stuff here, we're not gonna get any stores. You know, that's simple facts, I mean, you look at Moody, and, and the reason I say that, cause I'm very comfortable, I know Moody, I worked in Moody for almost thirty years. I, I worked down there when there was two thousand people in Moody. Now there's somewhere close to fifteen thousand, or five A school. Nothing came down there. You know, I always was an envious of everybody across the bridge over here at Leeds, even though I lived over here, I worked over there, they was getting the good stuff over here. We sat there, we'd sit back to try to get stuff over in Moody, even when I was working there, Leeds always get it. Well, you know, the horse and buggy's changed now. Moody's got the big. Moody's got the big population, they're gonna start getting the offers. I mean, right now, more than likely about nine and a half percent here, they gonna get a publics. And that's gonna put more stress on this store. Because publics, if you, they go up there, they gonna draw people for weight. They gonna draw people for Oprah, it's gonna cut a Walmart, it's gonna cut anybody. I mean, the whole thing boils down. If you don't have the people in that city to support the things, they're not gonna build them. In Food La, Food Land, or whatever it is, they're not gonna put another Food Giant three miles from the other one they got. So, you look, probably looking at a Food Land, and Food Land, most of them are in smaller towns. We're not, we're not, you know, we got some big business out here. We need to keep up with what's going on out there. Rooftops out, in that area, back behind it, get everything going out there. Those people, if they build houses out there, you gonna see stuff come up. But right now, they not, wait, what, twelve thousand people now, thirteen? Moody's not growing us that far in four years. I mean, it, uh, that's worse than that. Is them getting rooftops and people here to buy the things. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, that's all we need to do.
All right. Suspend the rules to make the finding. It's a resol, a proposed resolution of twenty eleven oh nine, twenty eight, that has the, uh, approval of the expenditure of public funds and the project improvement agreement.
So, we can suspend the rules or make it a first reading?
You can suspend the rules if you have unanimous consent.
It doesn't sound like we do.
Well, unanimous consent to suspend the rules. I'm just not to vote on the actual suspension.
Still allowed to be considered. Make motion, we suspend rules.
I'll second.
All right. Start from the right.
Mayor got a comment to make.
I guess we're voting now.
Yeah, that's what I know.
On suspending the rules.
And suspending the rules. I'm not voting against this because of the grocery store, it's a one and a half percent. No.
Okay, all right. We consider it's a first reading.
Well, I, I think one thing to vote on would be to, uh, to make this finding in section one. Go ahead, to go ahead and do that at this meeting, and then, uh, do a first reading of the remainder of the resolution.
I'll understand it. So, yeah.
Since this is the public meeting.
Okay.
This is the finding that, um, that the grant of the public funds in connection with the purposes, um, will serve a valid and sufficient public purpose, notwithstanding any incidental benefit.
We don't have to suspend it.
No, you can make that finding at this meeting, and then just, uh, do a first reading of approving the project improvement agreement.
Section two.
Section two, three. And you can, you can do, so you could do one and four at this meeting, and then do a first reading of two and three.
We can vote on, we approve that.
I would, I would vote up or down today on.
One and four.
One and four. And then just, and then you can just do it, it's just, uh.
But it doesn't take effect if we vote next time?
Well, one and four will be effective. You've made the finding, required by amendment seven seventy-two, and then just do a first read, and then you can just introduce a first reading of the entire, uh, resolution. So, so, uh, go ahead and approve and adopt one and four, making the findings in one and four, and then a first reading of the entire resolution as a secondary.
So, then we have a first reading?
Are the recitals?
Make a motion for a first reading?
Yeah, we made a motion.
The recitals, they're not included in what we're, in what we're.
Well, I mean, there's, they're the background.
Okay.
Uh, I guess they're, they, I mean, they have some definition. Um, I guess you could adopt the recitals as part of approving one and four. I mean, since they're sort of the background of it. So, you can make a motion to make the findings and determinations in one and four, and then do it, and then just introduce a first reading of the entire resolution.
Why you gonna do that?
And that, no, you don't, you're not suspending the rules at all, so there was not a unanimous vote, so it wouldn't be. So, you're just, uh, adopting and making the findings contained in the recitals, section one and four, and then introducing a first reading of the entire resolution.
So, what, this is kind of circumvent it?
No, it's just, no, it's, uh, in two week, in two weeks at your next council meeting, the project improvement agreement, which is the essence of it, which will be the proposed agreement with the developer, um, this will be the first reading of adopting that.
Well, why, why are we doing this in that way?
Well, one and four is making, because we had the public meeting tonight.
It's not just about the funds, does it? It's just about the funds?
It's one of the things. Quiet. Talk about number one.
You can make the finding under number one, which is basically that, uh, the grant of the funds and things of value in connection with the purposes described in the legal notice will serve a valid and sufficient purpose, notwithstanding any benefit to Mitchell Retail Properties. You can make that finding without suspending the rules. I mean, that's just a determination. You can do a lot of things without suspending the rules. The only things you have to suspend the rules for are things of permanent, eternal effect. It's debatable about even whether the project development or project improvement agreement itself would be of permanent, eternal effect. But as a matter of precaution, we like to, uh, either suspend the rules or just do a first and second reading. But you can make this, uh, determination under section one. I mean, if you make it and, you know, if somebody wants to say it's invalid, they can say that, but we're gonna have a meeting in two weeks and bring the whole thing up again and have a second reading of the entire thing. But amendment seven seventy-two, um, describes making the finding at the public meeting or not making the finding.
You have to do it at the public meeting.
Yeah, I mean, you're supposed to do it.
Finding that the funds can be used for this purpose.
Yeah.
All right, I guess.
But what you have done and said here, reinvent the week, that hasn't ever been done before. If I sat here and I voted the way I did for not to go out of session and do this here, then why are you gonna sit here and reinvent this week? Now, you could do whatever you wanna do, but what you doing was just reinvent the whole week. As far as I'm concerned, the whole thing dead, and, and this be the first reading.
What he said is, if you have a seven, seven-two here and you have to make a determination at that hearing if you can use the funds for this reason or not, that's what he said.
It's not saying you're gonna give them the funds.
It's not saying that, that you ratify the agreement.
It's not authorizing.
That the grant of the funds, um, for the purposes described in the legal notice, um.
Tell it's noticed and we had a hearing on it.
Yeah, will serve a valid and sufficient purpose, notwithstanding any incidental benefit accruing to Mitchell Retail Properties or any affiliate or any other side.
See, that's a requirement of seven, seven-two, is what he's asking for. Okay.
I'm, you can vote on that and make that finding. I mean.
Finding of the seven, seven-two here and.
Then in two weeks, we still have to do the second reading of the resolution.
Yeah, the agreement.
Right.
Which, in the sub, the essence of that is to adopt the project improvement agreement, which is the agreement between the city and, and the proposed developer, Mitchell Retail Properties, to do this. Again, in two weeks, if you've had a change of heart or whatever, I guess you, you know, you don't do it. I mean, but, so you're not, uh, you know, you're not bound, I guess, under the contract with the developer, or Mayor Patterson's not even authorized to sign the contract unless and until there's a second reading adopting the resolution approving the contract.
He's saying we have to make a, uh, a finding on seven, seven-two here. Okay, anybody wanna make a motion on that?
I make a motion that we, um, vote, um, to, uh, recommend the recitals in article one and four. Of, I don't know if I can say that, of, um, resolution two thousand and eleven or not, I can't.
I guess proposed resolution.
Proposed resolution two thousand and eleven oh nine. That's two days.
Sections one and four.
Yes.
All right, second.
I'll, I'll say second. Sorry, I'm rotten.
All right. All of those voters say aye?
Aye.
I was opposed, say no.
No.
Okay.
And I, and I will be discussing this here, but I think we just reinvent the wheel. Is it?
Reinvent the wheel, then. Yeah, I don't, I guess, it's not a bad thing. And then, I guess, introduce that first reading of the entire resolution.
Right, we, and that's the least.